No.
I really don't care. I'm throwing it out there, you said I told you before. Everybody's got a portfolio, too. What are you gonna put, West Central on there? Or are you gonna?
Yes, oh yeah. Okay. Go ahead and call the meeting to order. It is Tuesday, March 6, 2018. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the right of our liberty for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
More than one. Minutes on reports received and filed.
I have February 2018 Treasuries Report filed and February 2018 Auditor Report filed. And then February 2018, the Clerk, the Coroner, and Sheriff's Files filed.
Okay. Commissioner committee liaison reports, upcoming meetings and events.
Let's.
Let's hear it.
Guess chiefs have a meeting, Cole County Chiefs Association meeting Thursday evening. At our Renegades Coffee Friday morning, radio Friday morning.
Which one of you wants? I did it. I can do it again.
Okay.
You wanna do it?
No.
You wanna do it?
I can do it Friday, yeah.
Okay. I'll tell John.
It's at what, 8:30?
8:30.
8:45 or something like that.
8:30 is what I...
Yeah, by the time they get all the news. It's not very long.
Yeah, it's usually. You get there at 8:30, a year early.
Then we've got Jeff City Jamboree this weekend. Blair Oaks will be in there, too, so watch some baseball. Football fundraiser for Blair Oaks is Saturday night. Sunday morning, Country Ham and Sausage Breakfast at St. Thomas from 8:00 to 11:30. Go down there and get your belly full, go take a nap, and then come out to the project graduation chicken dinner at Wardsville Lions Club from 2:00 to 6:00. And then you have to go on diet. And I guess we've got a planning meeting next Tuesday. Next Wednesday is the, is that our? West Central Commissioners?
Yep, West Central Commissioners.
We're sponsoring it. Saw Waste Management Board meeting that day. HBA membership meeting that night. Got a little extra stuff in there before next Thursday's meeting, so.
Meeting on Thursday next week, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so if I'm not here, you'll understand why.
We got that meeting.
I was here Tuesday.
We got that meeting on Friday this week, correct?
Yeah, we do.
Okay. All right, so... So the Mid-Missouri Regional Planning Commission has hired a new executive director, and that will be David Bach. Now David was with the organization and will be stepping up, so... Just wanted to let you guys know.
They introduced him at the community's meeting Thursday.
Yeah, 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 he's been around. He knows everybody, so. Salute to America meeting tomorrow at 11:30. Rodden Bridge Advisory Meeting Thursday at 8:00 AM, Rodden Bridge. There's an EMF staff meeting on Thursday.
Yeah, I didn't have that on my...
At 8:00. And I think we've got a Parks meeting next Tuesday at noon. I think that's all I got.
Is Spyglass coming tomorrow? Debbie said I didn't have to be there, though, so I'm bowing to Debbie's thing. CAP Region Employees Recognition Dinner Thursday night, but then we also have a social. I think I'll go to that instead. Most of my other stuff, as you've already said, and I got USS Missouri meeting, but that's next week, so I won't worry about it. Okay. Appointments by commission. Appointments of Tina Miles to the Cole County Residential Services Board. We have that here. This was... I think she's a new board member.
She will be.
Yes, she will be, yeah. And I know Jim Casey had mentioned her last week, so I think he's okay with it.
No problem.
Good with it?
Yeah.
I move that we appoint Tina Miles to the... Cole County Residential Services Board.
Second.
All of paper?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. We have presentation from invited guests. Mr. Bob Ford with Geospan. And he said he can do this in seven minutes.
Well, I hope you're more interested than that. Am I up?
Yeah, you're up.
All right. Well, Geospan is an aerial imaging company, and we work with assessors throughout the Midwest. Microsoft's a big client. We do other things. But what I have to present to you of Cole County is a unique opportunity that we have come up with. Geospan will work with the assessors and the assessor's office in that my proposal is, we will fly your county, shoot every structure in your county with oblique, which is three-inch shots that I'll bring up here in a minute, at no cost to the county. If you let us share in the revenue we discover that's not on Chris S's books. So you get basically a complete audit and all these images I'll show you at no cost. We can only raise your tax base. We can't lower it. We take the financial risk of whether we find things or we don't. What I just said is on the back of these.
Thank you.
We're doing Caldwell County. I think we're doing the county over in California. I think we're gonna do that one. Caldwell County's signed up. I think we're gonna do Marais. And Franklin County last year. We did... What I'm gonna show you is Pilot Anna Howard, so we're... In this region, we've... I've known, I've known Jeff, loved him for a couple of years at all the meetings. So, anyway. But this is what you end up with. Melissa, if I get bogged down technologically, help me. She has seen the demo, and Brian has seen the demo. As I say... This is Howard County, and this could be Jeff City. This is Fayette, Missouri. And what these all are, the purple lines are boundary lines, and the red boxes are boxes that we have questions about, where we would then bring up to Chris and go, either we think this might have been mismeasured, this is stuff that wasn't even on your books. But anyway, then you could... You could pick out really anything, any of these. And here it comes. So the oblique images are these images that are taken from the side. And this is just a normal building on the main square. So what we would then do is he would be able to, as they say, desktop measure this. Hello, Chris. So basically... This program could save you an hour's worth of work right there. But there, that's the size of the building. That's what you could do for every one. Down at the bottom on the left is what the differences we see. In this building, the measurement is 3,800 feet. We see a difference of 2,200 feet. All we do is say, hey, Chris, we think you're off by... This measurement, the way we measure with three-inch obliques, hits the international standards for what's acceptable in court for assessors. But then, and this is about all... There are different layers to this. And I've gone over the layers with Melissa, but this is only the next layer I'll go to. So we have in the, let's say in this county, Howard County, we're looking for all the parcels that have more than 300 feet difference. So I punch that, and here they come. So we'd see, here are all the parcel lists. And you go down there and you just pick out one parcel if you wish, and then do what we just did, which is measure it. But this kind of image is what Melissa could use, what Chris could use. We also have people at 911, Sheriff's Office, Police. You would get a complete... Say there's a call on this building. You could have a laptop in whatever you're arriving in and show you where the entrance exits are, just like that, at, again, at no cost to the county. We would provide that software for you with, in working with Chris, in discovering real estate that's out there that isn't on his books. There are people that are hiding pole barns, there are people hiding buildings. There are... This will help, Chris, in measuring buildings. Anybody ever have a question? How dare you? Sit them down, measure their building right in front of their eyes. They'll go, well... But that's basically what you get. There are several different layers to it off of this, but that will be for the assessor and Melissa to be able to use. But, you know, I can keep on measuring if you wish. But it's... This is kind of the next step in how assessing will be done. And we figured out a way how to provide it to a lot of counties. You can either pay us for this, but in coming up with this shared, we finance, this is a way you can get the next step in technology at no cost. We ask for what we discover, 50% of the taxes you collect off of what we discover. Not just what we discover, then, hey, pay us. You gotta collect it. This is my program. I came up with it, so it's... I knew we couldn't get money out of your pocket. You hadn't collected yet, so it's... That's the proposal. It's more a joint venture between us than it is me selling you stuff. But this is the byproduct, and it's three-inch oblique imagery others don't have.
So the 50%, is that in perpetuity, or is that...
Yeah, six years.
Okay.
Six years. And then it's all yours, and it's stuff you didn't know was owed you.
So you fly it once, and then you don't fly it again for six years?
No, we would like... We think you would, we would work with Chris, work with Melissa, and work with you, and say, let's... I think you'd like it, and you go, let's do it again in three years. Basically what I think Cole County.
How accurate is, I mean, you're using a mouse or whatever, but how accurate is those points that you're picking up on the corner of that building?
Well, you get better at it, which is, you know, I'm okay at it. But the more you use it, the better you are. The point is that it used to be acceptable in the International Assessor Association. Now it is the recommended way to measure, rather than doing it by hand. So it's that sophisticated. Plus, you can do it, you know, several times, rather than...
Sure.
Two or three times at the building, you've wasted your whole morning, rather than 10 minutes sitting at your desktop.
I mean, I just, I just, sorry. I just questioned, you know, that oblique image. I mean, how accurate are we gonna get with pointing a mouse at that image to exactly what that is?
The International Assessor Association says you get more accurate than...
I didn't ask that. I wanna know if it's 300 feet exactly. If I go out with a tape measure and I measure, and it's 300 feet, and I do it on here, if it's gonna be 300 feet, or is it gonna be 301 feet, or...
I think, this is... Never had that question asked, actually, but it's... It's to the point, it's whatever you draw, and it's...
I will say, there are other companies that do this. We actually talked to pictometry back in 2008. And, you know, I would prefer to see if we're going into something like this, perhaps having other companies that are doing the same thing. I mean, they're providing it for free at the beginning, but you're still gonna be paying for it in the long run. And also, you're gonna have to figure out between the taxing entities, I assume, how they're gonna react to that. That was the thing that I was curious about. When you have all the different taxing entities, you know, you have to get... Do you have to get them to agree to giving up 50% of whatever that amount is? I mean, I know it's an amount that you're not seeing at the beginning that you don't already have, but are there other ways, maybe? I don't know. I think this is kind of going a little bit too fast. You know, I think we need to look at other, all of our options before we pull the trigger on it.
The way pictometry does it is they'll come in and fly it one year, and they'll fly it two years later and compare it to what they just flew. What we do is we work with Chris's books. It takes us almost a year to do this full audit. And it's all on us. And we come back with a list for Chris of, you know, maybe 5%, 10% of his parcels that we have a question about. And then we, so that's how the audit process works.
So if, when you take the picture, you find out that the building is actually smaller. So then, then what do we pay?
That, too.
I mean, if we're losing...
Not as often.
Well, I know, but I mean, but you could be...
Could be.
Yeah, so then...
Well, you wanna be right.
Then there's no charge to us?
Yeah, we don't, yeah. No, we lose money, we're not...
Okay, I'm just checking.
Yeah, the other thing is, you know, the assessor's office is about to go through this whole new software change. I don't wanna speak for the assessor's office, but I don't know that their staff can handle another project this year.
Well, we, as I say, we wouldn't be getting back to you. We would take it. And then you would have the availability to the images in two, three months. But then we wouldn't get back to you for about another eight months with the slow information to Chris's office of, all right, here's... We'd go to it. We'd ask Chris, what township would you like us to start? Then we'd come back in eight months and go, here's 50 parcels that we have a question about.
Well, Bob and I had run into each other a couple of times, and I told him, probably talk with our assessor and see what Chris thought of it. And then, you know, Chris kinda sent him back over and said, you know, talk to the commission. I wanted Melissa, probably Melissa and Brian, take a look at it. They did take a look at it, listened to Bob's sale on it. I don't think we can do anything this year with the other software transitions that we have going on. And then there's other questions, just like the tax entities. Are we able to give away Jeff City Public Schools money on newly found structures? I mean, yes, it's money that they wouldn't have otherwise. I think it's a good concept. I think it's a great concept.
I've been to the Tax Commission. I've been to the Attorney General's Office, and I've been to the Missouri Department of Revenue. And they all concur that it's between us and the counties on...
I'm fine with that. It's just, I don't think we're gonna do anything this year. I know you were wanting to try to fly it this year and have something going. And I really think we probably have to bid it out, you know, see who's gonna give us the best deal.
Well, nobody else is... And if you wanna go that way, right?
Okay, our collector has a question.
As collector, statutes require me, or tell me what I can deduct from what I pay the taxing jurisdiction. And that's not a thing I can deduct by law. I mean, the statute specifically say, what I collect, I can subtract the 1% that goes to the commission that goes to the county and the...
Close to 1% that goes to the assessor for the assessment fund and any liens that are put on by the city or the county, but that's it. Everything else I have to give to the taxing jurisdictions.
That's why they've sent me to the commission to get their authorization.
They can authorize it. It's law, state law.
And I've gone to the state attorney generals. I've sat down with them. I am a Missouri Supreme Court appointee myself, and I've run those traps. Wanting to answer the questions you're asking, too. And that's what they've come back, that's between you and the counties. 'Cause I don't wanna be sitting here proposing things that are gonna come back and bite you. So I don't think I am. But that's what they came back to me with.
Well, even if you reach an agreement with them, I'm not sure I would do it as a collector, because I don't know that there's anything that tells me I can divert money to pay for your services.
Well, anything is legality. Anybody can, you know, bring up any suit they want to anybody. But, you know, it's, again, it's unfound money. This is money you didn't know was out there. So we were just coming up with a proposal that allowed smaller counties than Cole County the ability to come up into the 20th century and be able to assess using technology that they wouldn't be able to afford. So that's the concept we have. And it's gotta be a win-win scenario. That's how we came up with it. We also offer in the contract, pay us for our service. And we'll still find all that, and it's 100% yours. And you get all these images...
It's not that I'm opposed to your concept or anything. I just, for me as a collector, I don't see any way that the money that I turn over, even to the county, I mean, the statutes say what I can do with that money. Somebody telling you that they think it's okay, the Attorney General or anybody else, it's not in the statutes, though, that say I'm allowed to do that.
What do I say? They read our contracts. I tried to answer those questions and have done the best I can with the appropriate people that can give me those answers.
I'd say we're not gonna really do anything right now.
Yeah.
We just wanted to afford him the opportunity to get in front of us and show us what it does. And we can get those questions answered.
Yeah.
Let me come back, you know, in the next season, and let's see what we did for the other counties around.
That's kinda what I was gonna say, is see how theirs works out and see how theirs holds up.
Yeah.
Cause that may come up.
They'll like it, if they don't like it, if they, you know, so it's...
There's no doubt that oblique imagery would be helpful to multiple departments here in the county. It's just, I don't feel like we need to rush into this particular thing when there's other options we may want to look at before we do this.
Pictometry, again, is six-inch, and it's not oblique. It's straight up and down. You don't know whether you're looking at a garage or a RV. So that's what, or this is much more expensive, but it is what you can use to assess property. You can't use a six-inch oblique that they tell you.
Pictometry has a four-inch also.
Then you gotta go out there and measure it.
Pictometry has a four-inch also. I have my form from...
Yeah, in cities. That's, they charge you more for it.
Chris, did you have anything you wanted to say?
I'm not sure I understood what Larry's saying.
I don't know if this would be the legality part of it. My assumption would be that the money that he receives would come from the county, from the county's portion of the taxation. Because of what Larry says, we can't take from the other taxing entities, and I believe that's exactly right. So the money would have to come from the assessment fund or general revenue, that difference there. Now, what Bob is saying is we'll be gaining for that, so it would be an increase overall. I personally think Bob's got a good product, and I think it bears looking at. The only problem I have right now is we just don't have the staff, and with the new software coming in, I just don't see how we could do it. But I would definitely like to look at it in the future. I mean, I think it would be something that would benefit a lot of departments in the county and probably the city, too. But that's my, I guess you would say, assumption on the finances for it.
Callaway is similar parcel size, and it's right next door, so we can...
Okay.
Attorney generals would not put it in writing because we're for profit.
State tax making, sitting there thinking, you know?
I did not say, she came from here, I believe. But, you know, I talked to, I just talked to them and told them what our concept. They see specifically, said that's between you and the counties.
Okay. Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
Thank you all very much. And I'll see you around the bend. Thanks, Bob.
Thank you.
All right, Chris. Thank you, Melissa.
Okay, bids and contracts. Bid award Meadowbrook Estates subdivision stormwater improvements, project number 2016-201-1.
Do you have a copy of the bid tabs? Not that you'd be able to read this one if I gave it to you, but it should be included with your agenda items. Are y'all good, or give me a copy? Sam? No, okay. We opened the bids on this project last Friday, and they came in very good. Roughly about 14%. The low bid's about 14% under the estimate. The low bidder is Stockman Construction. The base bid was $1,705,328.85. We had a alternate in there for diamond guy and grinding of some existing concrete pavement that will be left in place. And that bid was $14,661.56, a little bit under the estimate for that, and we felt that was a pretty good price. So we would like to accept that alternate and award the base bid plus alternate for a total contract amount of $1,719,990.41 to Stockman Construction Corp. Is there any questions?
No, there's some good bids all the way around.
Yeah, we were very happy with how everything turned out. Now, Stockman, just so you know, they're roughly about a half mile down the road from the project location, which serves them very well. So I think that's a good reason why their bid came in as it did. So...
There's still quite a range on them, but just, there's four of them that are under or are right at your estimates, so...
Yeah, like I said, we were very, very happy with things. There was about 15, 16 or so plan holders, nine bids. Don't know why exactly. That's, we've seen the other job we have. We open on Friday on South Liberty. We have even more plan holders. So either it's the time of the year is really good, or there's just some contractors really wanting some work, get things lined out. So I think we're hitting a good stride right now, so. It's a good bid, and we're ready to get going on it, so definitely recommend award to Stockman for this project. And just one more thing, so you know, the budget amount we had in here was about 1.6 million. We knew we would use a little bit of the overlay resurfacing money to account for the difference, because there is a big component of overlay or resurfacing with this project. And so the fact that the bids came in as good as they did, you know, keeps that supplemented, the amount that we supplement from the overlay account to a minimum. So it's a good thing all around for everybody involved. Any questions? To a minimum. So, it's a good thing all around for everybody involved. Any questions? Chris?
Yeah, I'm trying to get through all this.
You're thinking all hard.
Okay.
Some prices are a lot lower than the estimate, some are a lot higher. It's just kinda all across the board. Seems like the concrete items, pavement items were a little bit less. Some lump sum items were higher than the estimate. In our minds, that's a good thing, because those items can't overrun. Items that can typically overrun, they bid a little bit less than the estimate, so that's a good thing. The subgrade stabilization item, that price was a little bit on the higher side, but we did have a pretty conservative estimate of what we thought would be needing to be removed. So, I think we're okay there.
I was just, I mean, a lot of the line items, usually they're pretty close, and some of them are just a big difference.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, if you compare them to the next low, yeah, they're still not, some of the typical, you know, typical items that are in like units, not lump sum, but other quantities, those seem to be pretty consistent. But it seems like the lump sum items usually are a little unpredictable on how they're gonna bid that.
Yeah, I wasn't necessarily looking at that, but I mean, obviously, they, you know, sometimes they put more in mobilization, or, I don't even have one of those here, do we?
We have mobilization.
Where's it at? Towards the bottom?
Yeah, that's a lot less on.
Estimate was 100,000, their bid was 20. You follow that line all across. Some are low, some are high.
Yeah, that one's usually all over the board.
Mm-hmm.
But one of them where the biggest changes are at is a lot of times that subgrade stabilization. But if you're comfortable with the amount you had in there, I think is a big deal.
Yeah, I was just looking at the line item pricing and stuff. Usually, there's a little bit of variable, but some of them, there's just quite a bit. So, anyway, but like you said, sometimes they, sometimes they put in a big move, and sometimes they have money in other things where they're gonna get it quicker or something, so.
Well, I do know, just in talking to them through the bid process and a lot of questions they had, they were very eager to get this job. So, it's great for them. I mean, it's in their backyard or less, so they're gonna see that benefit right there just by being so close. So, that'll be, they're able to put in a little bit better bid on it than some of the others. We did, in the bid or in the proposal, there's four items that we added a percentage for some potential overruns, just because it allows a little bit more quantity there, just in case we do get into it. And one of them, it seemed like the one that we run into the most is the driveways. And that's 608-9905. So, there's an inflated quantity there. But see, their price is a little bit more than what the estimate was, but we got some room there. And I think, just in going through the process of the design process, we had a pretty conservative estimate on how much driveway we'd have to replace on each one that was impacted. So. Said, oh, well, it's a really good bid, and we're ready to go on it.
One item that just jumps out at me a little bit, Eric, here. No. The eight inch sewer drain PVC pipe. I mean, they seemed like they were pretty low on that. Any ideas there?
Well.
Not too far out of line with some of the others, but with Sneeders, they're about half.
Yeah, this.
That just seems.
I'd hate to speculate too much on that, because that's not really my specialty. The sewer work, that's in an area where we're building the box culvert. We're having to replace the sewer through there, because it was right in line with it, and.
So, Jeff City Sewer?
Jeff City, yeah. No, they'll be out there inspecting it as it's being built. It's not really, it's their service.
So, will they pay for that, or?
No, because we were impacting it. We had to, if they were doing an upgrade on something else, sometimes they do that on some projects, they do pay for it. But in this case, since we were impacting it because of what we were doing, we had to replace that.
Okay. So, you're just looking for a ward today?
A ward, yes, and I have the contracts as well.
So, you're looking for a ward and a signature?
Yes.
When are they gonna start?
Haven't talked to them specifically about that, but I know they're ready to get going. So, I would say within a couple weeks, it should turn around very fast.
Let's keep moving ahead.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Good?
Yep.
All right. I move that we award and sign the contract for Meadowbrook Estates Stormwater Improvement Project with Stockman Construction.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, unfinished business. Being a nice guy, and we're gonna combine both of Jerry's with Hand Tevey's system agreement and his EMS staffing, because he's gotta go to work.
The Hand Tevey, the purchase of those 13 units you guys approved last week as a sole source, to proceed with the order, the company requires us to sign their quote. Jill had sent you her comments on that. Bottom line came in, $17,402.87. So, we're just looking for a signature. Any questions?
No.
So, what were the comments on that? Did I miss that, or?
The usual objections to all that boilerplate language.
Okay.
But Jerry said that a number of other agencies have this equipment. Nobody's ever had a problem. Correct, Jerry?
Yeah, that's correct.
Yeah.
Including some in Missouri here.
We get this stuff all the time.
Yeah, I realize that.
So, it's just, what do you guys come up with?
So, if we have a problem, what are we gonna do? We have to go to arbitration in another state?
I don't call them. I mean, I sent the letter a couple weeks ago.
That was one of them?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm fine with it. I don't know. I guess.
Are they gonna change that arbitration thing for us? Probably not.
Yeah, I haven't had any contact with them. I just sent this, my comments to everybody. So, you know, I don't know. If you wanna go, if you wanna hold off, we can go back and contact them and see.
So.
I don't know what.
I mean, I don't have a problem signing the quote. Are we, are they gonna bring the stuff and train us before we pay them?
I don't know the before we pay them. But Dr. Hand Tevey himself is gonna fly in. Do the training for six in-house instructors, so we can perpetuate the course from there.
I mean, I guess, I guess my thing is, is that obviously, we get the stuff, we get the training, we write the check. I mean, sometimes they want the check, and then.
No, I'm not worried about that.
Well, once we write the check, we don't have, I mean, we gotta.
We could write the check in two parcels, because it's quoted as the equipment, I mean, the 17,000 is in total, but the training is a separate line on there. There's like 2,500 to fly him in and do the training. So, we could pay the equipment, then we could pay the training. I could give him the check when he's here. We could cut it. I could give it to him when he's here, if that's your preference.
I guess what I do. I mean, we get into all these one-sided agreements, and it's all great, as long as everything's great. Until something's not great, and then we're in a, holding back good. So, anyway, I do that stuff too.
We never pay until we receive anyway. So, I mean, the equipment. This just has the training component added, so we can have the trainers in-house and be able to maintain the program once it's here and operational.
Okay, so what do we have to do? We have to sign a quote, or?
Yeah, I get it. Sam?
Mm-hmm.
No, no. It's just equipment storage, equipment, and training. Any of the disposables that we would use would come from our existing stock that we buy under another bid.
So, this is kind of a boilerplate thing, Jill, or?
Yeah.
Because it's talking about subscription to software, it's talking about fees, hosting of software, customer data, internet usage.
She had on page four under the warranty thing that it basically says there's, it will perform accordingly, but then there's no warranty.
That warranty of versatility, throw into everything. That stuff probably won't hold up in court. It's what's called an adhesion contract. Now, as far as all the software and all that business, Chris, I had.
Done the prior.
You know, as far as what the product is.
Right.
I'm no expert on what the product is. So, I assume that whoever it is who's sending me this contract has determined what the product is and whether it applies to their product. I'm just looking at the legal.
Sure. So, what's this annual renewal?
Plus.
Plus.
I mean, this is just a one-time cost, right?
There's no annual renewal.
Do you know the product pretty good and their reputable owners?
Yeah, yeah. I saw, I saw Dr. Hand Tevey speak. We were going to that in California before I moved. I know Tanne County down in Branson and several other places in Missouri have it and are very happy with it. And they feel it's improved their care and their outcomes. So, I don't really have any issue with it.
I'm impressed that he personally is coming.
He's probably never been to Jefferson City, Missouri.
If it has a bunch of irrelevant, if they're just irrelevant.
Right.
They're not gonna make a difference. Looks to me like he's got some boilerplate thing from somewhere.
Okay. So, I move that we sign the purchase order with Hand Tevey.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. EMS staffing discussion.
Okay, so, we have a reservation on the night shift. That takes us to 50% of our night shift paramedic openings. 50% of our positions on the night shift side of the paramedic staffing are open. So, day shift openings are easy to fill. We have no current openings on the day shift. And I had a thought that if we could somehow entice one or two folks on the day shift to move to nights temporarily for maybe four to six months, probably more like six months, that it would balance our openings, it would cut overtime, and it would help our work patterns for everybody, so that we don't end up working everybody to death. So, my thought was, make a proposal, offer an incentive to a couple people who would be willing to move from days to nights, offer them the $2 night shift differential in the interim, which is budgeted anyway, and then maybe offer them a $1,000 attendant, or not attendant, so staffing bonus to do this payable at the end of the six-month period. Again, like I said in the email, $1,000 is two and a half overtime shifts. So, the cost to us is minimal, but the payback would be immeasurable in terms of savings for overtime, because right now, we're limited in how many people are available to work night shifts. And generally, even on the part-time side of the house, I've got a couple part-timers right now that can get overtime, because they're available and willing to work nights. So, I'm just trying to come up with ways to think outside the box to get us through this time until we can recruit some more paramedics. I've no trouble with dispatchers. I got 20 applications in three days for the dispatch part-time positions. We got 10 or 12 EMT applications. I've gotten over 20 deputy chief applications, just in a short period of time. But we, for some reason, we are having a great difficulty recruiting paramedics. So, I'm not here trying to get anything or gain any payroll for any of our folks. I'm just trying to figure a way to kind of balance staffing while at the same time rewarding our employees for doing that, and we as a county have a reduced overtime cost.
So, it's.
By the end of March, we'll have four of the eight night shift open.
This would be for paramedics only?
Paramedics only, and only two.
Okay. And what about the paramedics we've already got working evenings? And they go, well, I'm not gonna get a $1,000 bonus.
Well, then, that's what we have to deal with. But keep in mind, they're part-time, and most of them have an incentive to work here already, either for extra money or just to, some have more administrative-type positions by day, and they're still paramedics and they like to do it. So, it just is what everybody's expectation is. I'm not as worried about that. I'm just trying, like I said, I'm trying to find a way to balance the openings, fill the shifts, and keep our overtime costs down. Otherwise, with four night shift openings, I'm not gonna have a choice. Fill them with part-timers until that runs dry, and then fill them with overtime shifts. Because that's our minimum staffing at night. We only have four ambulances up, and I can't take one down.
I'm pretty sure we'd have to run that by Jill, because as far as I know, there's no such thing as.
Right.
Can't.
So, I guess, just my thought would be is to add a dollar an hour for, to entice people to take the night shift.
So, make it three instead of two?
But not, not, not just to fill these shifts for full-time only, to fill these shifts. So, I mean, basically, if you're talking six months, that's 1,000 hours, it's a dollar an hour. I mean, get shit around the bonus and everything else, but.
Okay.
I mean, all we can do is try something and see if we can get people to take it or whatnot. I mean, I'm just throwing that out there. I don't know what you guys think, but.
I'm fine with that.
Got thoughts, Jeff?
I don't know. Am I gonna leave it at that?
No.
No, this would just be for two employees for a six-month.
So, then in six months, they all say, well, let's just bid on the day shifts, and we'll make them give us a raise.
Hopefully, we'll have, the thought is, we'll be able to recruit paramedics in that six months. I would come up with some kind of agreement that they would, they would sign and get Jill to approve it ahead of time to, just so that on paper, it would lay out the expectations that they're getting $3 instead of $2, and it's for a six-month time period, outline that time period. And then at the end of six months, or when we hire a couple paramedics, they revert back to their previous shift. It'd be a pretty simple, simple document.
I don't mind night shift differentials. I'm just struggling with the extra pay on it, if we can just. it. If we can just pay a little overtime now and eat it, and then we fill them later on, we're gonna still be ahead.
It's, it's a lot of overtime, Jeff. I don't, I don't like overtime anymore as you, it's a lot.
We're usually picking on the overtime and I'm here arguing against it, but if you're paying them overtime, you're not having to pay added benefits for another employee. So...
Well, honestly, it's a moot point. If that, if that's the position of the commission.
I thought you were gonna slap me right now.
If that's the position of the commission.
You'd be a whole lot better to pay benefits than you would overtime. I can tell you that.
I'm glad to do that, but I just, I think this is more...
Depends on what kind of employee you get.
I'm glad this is recorded.
No, that's why I don't like this. I did not say that. So, when do you have to know? Do you have somebody that's sitting in there that will take the job at a dollar more than an hour?
I don't know if anybody would be willing to do it.
Or you do both the S's on it, then, I mean, go ahead.
I, I just threw it out there. I mean, I would say, I don't think we can do bonuses, so...
I, I like that.
I liked that. I thought...
And keep in mind...
And it may not work.
We have four openings. Once we recruit two paramedics, this goes away. So, if we recruit two paramedics in a couple months, this still goes away. Because once I get a couple positions filled, we're good.
It's gonna be a problem later on because then all of a sudden we'll have the salaries are gonna be all over the board. So, if one of them changes and goes to a day shift, they're gonna take a three dollar cut.
Salaries are already all over the board. We're not, we're not hurting it really either because they're already all over the place.
So, I'm assuming the ones you're recruiting from now on are night shift only?
Yes.
And the people that are moving from days to nights, the people that replace the day? I mean, you don't need them on days?
Day shifts are easier to fill. So, if we have one or two day shift openings are easier to fill. We've got a supervisor. We've got me. We've got Valerie. Um, we've got people that can fill those. Even if, if part-timers don't take the shifts, we have people there that can do it.
It would have to be, otherwise you got other ones just hanging there then, six months.
Right.
It would have to be part-timers or...
Part-timers for what?
For the day shifts that will now, that they're moving down to night shifts. I mean, if you refill those, then...
Doesn't matter which ones you fill, you're paying overtime.
Yeah.
I don't, I'm not following.
The thought is the day shift, operationally, I can tell you, day shifts are easier to fill than night shifts. The...
With part-time people or...
Correct.
Okay.
So, so I'm more confident that we can fill day shifts with part-timers than we can night shifts. It ebbs and flows a little with people's schedules, the way they rotate. But the worst-case scenario is that one of the administrative folks, um, jumps on an ambulance for the day. It's not the end of the world. It's, it's not, not an issue. We couldn't do it every day and keep up, but that's why I left the deputy chief job description be a Missouri licensed paramedic so that they can get eventually up to speed as a medic too.
So, obviously, we gotta, we gotta fill two full-time night positions.
By the end of the month, we'll have four open. I would call the first two pivotal, pivotal in keeping the overtime costs down. Then, then we'll be back to within budget. But if you're not, having those remain open is just, if we don't try something creative, I'm afraid the overtime is gonna get out of whack. And if, if that's okay, I'm, I'll, I'll do what the commission's pleasure is. I'm just trying to, to be creative in figuring ways to balance staffing and to keep the overtime cost within budget in the midst of quite a few openings.
So, after six months, you're gonna give them a reduction?
Because we're gonna give them an increase. We would anyway. If, if somebody came to me today and said, I'm willing to go to nights for two dollars an hour, I can tell you, I've already tried that. I've already sent that memo and got no responses. So, if, if they were willing to go to nights now, they get a two dollar increase. Then, when they went back to their home shift, we would take it away. So, this would be the same procedure, process.
So, we're just adding a dollar an hour enticement, basically, for them to take a night shift.
Right.
What if they chose to stay on the night shift? Would they keep the three dollars?
If they chose to stay, we'd take, they, they would go back to the two dollar.
After six months?
And if it was me, then I'd say after six months, I'm gonna quit unless you give me, keep that raise on there. Because you have to have me. Nobody else is wanting to do it. So, I, I think it's gonna come back and bite us. And but if we're gonna do it, we need a plan on keeping that night differential at three dollars. If we're having trouble filling it, if we're having that much troubles, then we need to look at keeping that differential in there.
You mean for everybody?
Yeah, but there's lots more of them set already.
Do what?
There's a lot, there's other ones that are already on nights.
I mean, I, I don't look at it as a...
Then they get it too. I don't think it's fair not to give them the, they're filling in the night shift. Maybe they're just waiting for a day shift right now and they're doing it.
That's generally the way it goes.
So...
Well, that's why I asked you, you know, the ones that are already working, the night shifts, you know, I knew we were talking about a thousand dollar bonus, is the ones that are already working that they don't get the thousand dollar bonus. I would be a little bit upset, um, that here, I've been a good trooper working the nights and all of a sudden these new ones coming on are getting the thousand dollar bonus. So, which I guess, I think is what Jeff's saying too.
I don't think you can do a bonus.
Well, no, we can't. That's why I like Chris's idea of...
Yeah, we talked about bonuses before.
Yeah.
That's when that came up. That's why I emailed about it. I didn't think that we could.
Yeah.
And in effect, though, I mean, Chris's dollar an hour is the one dollar. It'd be the same net effect.
Based on a thousand hours?
Yeah, on the six months.
I mean, I...
It affects them.
I don't see it as taking the night shift differential to three dollars. I mean, I'd adamantly oppose that. Um, I see it as if you'll take a night shift, I'll give you an extra dollar an hour and then you get the two dollar differential.
For the, for the temporary positions, the couple of...
Well, I mean, yeah. I mean, I guess I'd even...
Are you gonna give it to everybody in...
No, no. I wouldn't give it to everybody. I mean, that's, that's what we got in the mess we're in. I mean, we need, we need two people to pick up a night shift. And we're gonna give you a dollar extra an hour and see if somebody will take it.
For six months.
For up to six months.
Up to six months, yeah.
My thought is that if I recruit and hire somebody, once they are successfully complete their training, then I would put them on the night shift at the two dollar an hour and take one of the three dollar an hour people and move them back to their home shift on days. That's, that's kind of my thinking.
I don't know. It's making my head hurt thinking about it.
I'm not prepping for a day.
I mean, we got a, we got a recruiter that's actively trying to find us some people. I mean, we don't know what those, you know, we have some ranges in salaries there on different folks. And so, you know, we may fill them right away. We may not. I mean, but right now...
I am getting feedback from the, from a lot of training organizations in our area. Recruiters reached out to them and have reached out to us for information. And I'm probably gonna myself go and make some pitches to some paramedic classes here coming up. So, that hasn't paid dividends yet, but I'm hopeful to be laying the foundation for that.
Well, it's just a temporary thing. Try to keep us up and running.
So, I mean, basically what I'm saying is we got two shifts open and I'm gonna pay an extra dollar an hour for those two shifts.
I'll go with that.
You good with that? Are you good with that?
I'm good with that.
Okay. There's your direction.
Can I have a timeframe on that?
As you said, overtime just doesn't matter.
Did we get married not to... Trust in my word.
Well...
If you look at a lot of these places...
Say up to six months and we need to revisit it.
Yes.
Up to six months, at that time, we might need to revisit.
Jeff, you don't need to put that in the paper.
That was sure said.
I love it, Jeff.
He's gonna be watching the film.
Okay, new business. Let's keep going.
I'm gonna have to see how I word it.
Let's, let's keep going. Accounts payable review.
There is no accounts payable this time.
Whoa.
Yes. Didn't have no problem with that dollar.
Approval and signing of emergency management ordinance. Mr. Farr, is that you?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Bringing it up to speed, uh, I'd like to, permission from the commission, uh, permission to approve ordinance. It says that we are adopting the National Incident Management System. I might advise you, we have done that in our local emergency operations plan for many years. It's been in there. Um, but with our new federal grant guidelines, it basically says that we have to pass that by ordinance. Uh, that is in, uh, the county ordinance as well as it will be put in our local emergency operations plan. This goes actually back to two thousand and three. It states in the ordinance, uh, when presidential direction, Homeland Security President directed HSPD five. So, as we know, after nine eleven happened, there was a lot of changes in federal government. A lot of departments were put under Homeland Security. And they adopted the NIMS, which is the National Incident Management System. We've adopted that. Uh, when I came along in two thousand and eight, I put that in our plan in two thousand and nine. So, it's there. They just wanted to have an ordinance passed that's saying that the commission recognizes that as a, the, uh, the matter of how we would handle any exercises, disasters, or anything that might come as an event. So, basically, that's just basically it. I went to, uh, the city has passed it one as well. And with the county, we've got everything covered. Of course, uh, last night, we didn't get to do it. So, we'll go back Monday and get it passed with the city. So, I think you all have a copy of that. I hope it's sent out. If not, here it is.
I think you did email it or something.
Actually, it puts us in guideline with any federal grant. So, if it's a public works, if we have a disaster declaration like we did a, a few years ago in the county, this basically is covering all of our, not just my grant, any grant that we would put in for. It's gonna be initiative, uh, that they're really pushing hard on. So, it just puts us in line with everybody else. It's something very simple. We already use it. So, and we have used it in the past.
Good?
Yeah.
Good.
I move that we...
Did our national, uh, take away for name, sirens real, I hope.
I didn't hear them.
My kids did.
I didn't either.
I always hear the...
My kids heard it and they said, there's an emergency! What's going on?
It's about grants.
You can hear that thing when you're in a shower too. That kinda scares you. Good thing you got a gun in there with you.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. The one in Wardsville. Every time I, I hear that thing too and it just, it makes me think about Bill and his sirens. So, it's Irene.
Irene Bill.
Yeah, Irene Bill. Yep.
I move that we approve and sign the National Incident Management System ordinance.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Bill, I know you've been trying to find some Hazmawopper training too for us. I wanna thank Emergency Management for that kind of stuff, for household hazardous waste collection that we do. Public Works for their guys that helps staff it and all the work that they go through for it. There's a lot of people that, that use that service. So, and it, you know, it's kinda taken for granted, the work that everybody does for it. So...
I had no idea.
Yeah, we've got a refresher course coming up that the Salt Waste Management District is getting put together for this year, but...
We're getting some by for that, yes?
If we have, they've got one. They're gonna do it up in Fulton again. Uh, I think it's Clean Harbors is probably doing it. So, they're the ones that do the collection. But if something comes up and you find out somebody's doing one...
We probably need a, an eight-hour hazmat refresher from my hazmat tech. So, we can probably line that out together. Now, I've got money in the LECC plate.
Well, they got a guy that's more geared towards the HHW end of it. Because a lot of times, the ones that you all have is way up here. So...
Yeah, let me know when they do that. I'm gonna get some money going too.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, just keep it in the back of your mind. If y'all ever do it, let us know. If we got somebody needing refresher, we can do it right here and maybe even get the Cowboy County, some of them may even, I'll drain my, jump in on it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we zip right through this.
All righty, we're done.
No. That comes along.
Don't you dare say closed session.
Now, I'm gonna let Chris, I'm gonna let Chris say closed session. Do we have anything else to come before us, before we go into closed session?
Sam, you said it.
Nope.
So, we had several, uh, legislation issues that, um, we had seen. And one of them was on the, uh, regarding the treasure. And so, are you gonna contact our legislation, legislators in regards to that?
Yes.
So, are we gonna put a letter to oppose that or...
I'll just see where it is. I'll talk to Senator Kehoe's office and see where it's at.
Okay.
See what they would like us to do.
So, could we maybe draft a letter and all three of us send a separate one? So, they can all get it too?
Can, yeah.
Probably all get hold of CCAM and find out where they're at on it.
Yeah, I can tell you where they're at. You don't gotta get involved.
Is that our blue...
Well, we can actually ask them next week at, uh, Dick Burke will be there and...
Well, you need to check for Scott Mars.
Yeah, he'll be there. He should be there next week too.
Right, it's the H. Justin's. I don't see it on his report at all. So, that's what, Chris caught it and I hadn't seen it. So...
Yeah, that...
It also doesn't give the presiding any more power than it already has.
That gives me a red Corvette, I think, is...
I already gave you one. What'd you do with it? Get your little hot wheel out.
Right there.
There you go.
It's got in his desk drawer.
Yeah, I didn't see anything on, on Scott's report. So, that's one I, I'm hoping that he's kinda keeping an eye on that if it's gonna affect anything.
Well, I will talk, I'll talk to Senator Kehoe.
All right.
I just think we, we needed to let Burnscutter know and it's a house, it's a house bill, isn't it? Is it? Okay.
I think if Sam makes a phone call, it might be, be the best route for now.
I'll see what they, if they want us to come over and... Yeah, it just, that doesn't mean it's...
Sure. Okay. Was there any others that had any impact on us?
Not anything that's really moving along that I remember.
Okay. All right.
Okay, you make, he didn't, he didn't want me to, so...
I don't care. You already said closed session. I'm gonna beat you up. There's cameras on.
Take it, take away his power to preside over the meeting.
I think we do that occasionally.
Come on, guys. You're supposed to treat your elders with respect.
We are. All right. Close session pursuant to section six, ten, point oh-two-one of the revised statutes of Missouri for legal action, sub-one, and personnel issues, sub-three.
Second.
Roll call.
Sam.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
Yes.
Jeff, what do you wanna do first?
Let's do, uh...